Okay, thank you everyone for coming. Call the order. In Jen Petronio's absence, I'll be running the meeting tonight. So with that, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, Kim, roll call.
All set, thank you.
Then we'll call for the approval for the agenda. It was all that the Board of Education approved the agenda for the May 8th, 2023 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move.
You got Tony and Wayne? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? That's it. Okay, with that, I'll hand it over to the superintendent for the Board of Education spots.
Thank you. The Board of Education will recognize and honor the following Baldwinsville school students for their outstanding achievements and accomplishments. OCM OSCE's inducted thirty-one Baldwinsville students into the National Technical Honor Society on April 11th, 2023. Inductees represent the best of the best. The students enrolled in the career tech ed programs are all here tonight, so we're very excited to be honoring them. Students who qualify must have... Student, thank you. Students who qualify must have an eighty-five average or higher, twelve or fewer absences from their program for the year, and receive a teacher endorsement. Students must also demonstrate respect, honesty, skill, responsibility, leadership, and service and citizenship. At this time, I would like to invite a board member, Anthony Germano, up to the front, and Dr. DeBarbury to congratulate these students. At the end, we're also going to get a picture of all of you to put up on our social media. So we will call your names individually.
Again, congratulations to our students. We're gonna start first. And I'll apologize in advance if I butcher your last name. We'll get it right when you come up here. That one, that one is easy. So we'll start first with Natalie Allen for cosmetology. Next, we have Tyler Oringer, welding. Also in cosmetology, Olivia Bigsby. Another cosmetology, Lydia Bochevsky. In automotive technology, Braden Bullis. For New Vision's criminal justice, Ally Klut. For health occupations, Katie Collins. For computer technology, Alec Crandall. For New Vision's criminal justice, Adriana Crossier. For construction technology, Zachary Kraus. For health occupations, Braylan DeTota. For New Vision's medical professionals, Alexis Devaney. For physical therapy and rehabilitation, David Dunbrak-Browlowski. For welding, Connor Gally. For health occupations, Janaya Durham. For New Vision's engineering, Jack Ginsburg. For culinary arts, Micah Goss. For early childhood education, Olivia Hall. For cosmetology, Leah Jakowski. For New Vision's medical professionals, Madison Kennedy. For childhood education, Haley Krollick. For automotive technology, Eric Lemay. For automotive technology, Jared Marcherzak. For New Vision's engineering, Sydney McKennie. Also for New Vision's engineering, Cassidy Primrose. For automotive technology, Colin Van Behringer. For construction technology, Gianluca Vancor. For construction technology, Leonardo Vono. For automotive collision, Alex Wilder. For cosmetology, Shannon Williams. And for automotive technology, Brian Jaeger.
Thank you.
Dr. DeBarbury, did you want to mention the Skills USA?
While we're gathering for a group, we also wanted to recognize a few of our students who participated in the New York State Skills USA competition, which was held a little over a week ago. Now, Dr. Davis and I had an opportunity to see some of the students performing at the skills competition. And the students that were participating and did quite well, we had Kayden Burner in automotive vehicle maintenance basic. And we do have extra certificates for these folks. In the area of aesthetics, Echo Carter. In construction technology, Gianluca Vancor. And the last representative from our district, who will be competing in the national competition in June in automotive technology, congratulations, Brian Jaeger. Echo, come back up for one more picture.
I want to thank the parents and the grandparents and all the families that are here tonight. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. But most importantly, I'm very proud of the students. And just an amazing accomplishment to see this level of skill right here in this room. And something to celebrate because we certainly owe it to our students to be here for them and to, you know, embrace them and celebrate them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to congratulate everyone on all their hard work. As Dr. Davis said, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but this is generally when many of those awardees sneak out. So now would be the time to do that. Again, congratulations. Okay, with that, we'll continue on here with the correspondence board activities and committee reports. On Thursday, April 27th, there was a wellness committee meeting. You can hear the report out during that.
Sure, I can do that. The first topic that we talked about was the Wellness Inquiry inquiry review on approximately two hundred and ten responses. They were overwhelmingly asking for PDC workshops and we discussed what kind of workshops would we like to, what the staff would like to see. There was also questions about what would be most helpful to the staff. And it was connections within the, with the colleagues based on school wellness. There was also conversation about if there was the stress level, how it was compared to the past couple of years. And their stress level was there again. A lot of respondents noted that it had to do with outside of school issues, whether it had to do with family or children, illnesses that they were dealing with. And there was also a discussion about maybe a school-based wellness therapist in buildings. And there was a discussion had about EAP resources that our district through OSCE provides and making possibility of making staff and trying to make staff more aware of the resources that are available to them. And somehow highlighting how those resources can help them. And by contacting EAP, they will be helped with other issues. We also talked about the WellSat results that are in, which is an assessment tool to assess our policy, our wellness policy, and how we are fulfilling our policy. There are some things that we need to work on and that is going to be shared out with us. And we're going to work next year to update the policy on what we need to work on. PDC day was had and the wellness classroom was used. There's approximately fifty-nine staff enrolled in that. And we talked about how maybe we could increase the enrollment, possibly through technology and having a link through our B-ville website for our staff. And we discussed maybe talking to technology so that we could get that up and running and more participants for our staff. There'll be a Board of Education presentation next week by the wellness, by Christopher for the Wellness Committee. The newsletter was distributed, I think, on May 1st. There are many articles, including looking for someone, multiple people to organize the Syracuse Workforce Run, which was the, which was also known as the Corporate Challenge. There are many helpful tips, working to find joy in the last two months of school, articles by our district dietitian Rachel on nutrition tips, recipes, approach to 5K walk training program, articles about visiting our CNY parks. And the parks that were listed had activities that people could have participated, excuse me, participate in. Also, there was benefits of avocados, community-supported agriculture, Rio Prep, self-regulation exercise for students, and intuitive reading videos. There was a food service update about the farm-to-table bid for the harvest of the month. And they're currently working, meeting with Cornell Extension to secure the grant, produce, to secure produce from our grant money. This summer, they're gonna work on what our colleagues would like to see as far as inner wellness and the library. And hopefully, there's, in August, there will be an opportunity for the entire staff to meet. And hopefully, there'll be a wellness activity and to get the message out there that we are here to support our staff and to, so that they will feel validated and support them. And I also like to thank our district and all of our staff that has been posting on the mental wellness awareness on our website and on our Twitter and our accounts. The tips from our staff have been well received. And I've had some people contact me that they were very helpful. So thank you to the staff.
Thank you. Anything to add to this?
The only other thing I'm gonna add is the next meeting is supposed to be May 25th, but they talked about moving it up because their presentation is at the May 22nd board meeting. So we're waiting to hear from Ms. Fo about that. But other than that, I think Sam pretty much got everything.
Thank you. That, May 1st, the board met in exec session for a special board meeting. And then next up, May 4th and 5th, there was a Human Resources and Employment Law Solutions Conference. I believe Tanya went to that, correct? And Dave?
Yeah, I can speak to that just quickly. Tanya did attend with me. Just briefly, the exciting world of human resource law. It covers a lot of stuff, from FMLA to ADA law and human resources to healthcare stuff and also some updates on workplace harassment.
Thank you. Must be exciting if it's at Turner's. And lastly, appreciate all the attendance and participation tonight in the Meet the Candidates night in the public budget hearing. With that, upcoming events, another busy May. Most importantly, probably on there, the budget and school board election votes next week. So if you haven't already, please plan to show up for that between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM at the Operations Building next to the district office. Does anyone else have any other activities or things to bring up?
I just, I just wanted to say happy teacher appreciation. So thank you to our teachers for everything they do for our students. Just give them around with applause.
I concur with that, but I also note that the Special Champions event is not listed on here, which is scheduled for May 15th. So if you can get out to that, get out to it. I promise you, you'll leave with a smile on your face.
Thanks for that, Tony.
Anything else?
Okay, with that, I'll hand it over to Zan for the student board report.
Okay, so I feel like this is kind of one of the lighter ones. But a lot of it's just because a lot of stuff that's happening right now is pretty normal. There's a lot of art shows going on, a lot of concerts going on in the next two or three weeks. Specifically, the art showcases for here on the corner, Baker on the 25th. They've already lined most of the hallways with all sorts of stuff. And it seems like it's spreading throughout more of the school than it did last year, which is pretty cool. Being a kid that's, I took an art class this year, watching the kids create this stuff all year long is going to be interesting. I take like a ceramics course, so it's interesting walking in there and seeing like, I don't know, some of the vases that kids have created or just stuff like that, like being in an intro to wheel throwing course and being able to throw a mug, barely being able to. And then kids that can throw like a three-foot vase, I don't know, it's just pretty cool, especially at the high school level. I also wanted to mention Teacher Appreciation Week. Week and not only just the teachers, but also all of the support staff or guidance counselors, or I guess even you guys keeping the school running behind the scenes. So just, yeah, from the student perspective, to thank you all of them. Wellness Day stuff was mentioned, but we're also doing a Wellness Day at Baker. It's on the 25th, I believe. We recently had a survey that was sent out. And I think there's something like forty activities that kids could pick from, anything from like salsa dancing to upward journaling. I personally will not take part in salsa dancing, but I know there's a lot of kids that will. So that's, I think, an hour until those two thirty-minute sessions on the 25th. AP exams are, thank God, almost over. We have two coming up on Wednesday, so I'm glad this meeting's on Monday. But yeah, they're almost done. I think the last one is the 11th, so we're almost done with that. The school year comes to a close pretty quickly. And one of the other things that always happens towards the end of the school year is the culture festival. The students that are running it this year asked me to make a little bit of announcement. So that's May 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it is as it sounds, it's a festival of different cultures spread throughout the students at Derby and Baker. Yeah, there's not a ton, but again, it's all just pretty normal end of the year stuff. I guess also just on the theme of mental health, I feel like they've done a lot this year. Like I mentioned at the last meeting, I looked at the calendar of the stuff that's happening throughout the entire, something every Friday, like last week. I think it was called Chalk the Walk or something like that. And there was a whole bunch of drawings that kids made throughout the building, well, not throughout the building, but on the sidewalks. And then also just like positive messages. And I guess it's just nice that that recognition is coming forward now. And whether it be you're just having an off day or you've got something serious going on, it's just nice that the school and the district is also recognizing mental health as much as they are this year. So, yeah, I said it was brief, that's that.
Thank you, Zan. I did have the opportunity to stop by your ceramics class not too long ago. I think you're underwhelming here, Tim. Okay, with that, Kim, do we have requests to speak?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So we appreciate anybody who comes out to speak publicly at the meetings. Public comments are welcome. They are limited to three minutes per speaker and a total of thirty minutes for all speakers combined. We should not include specific individuals or positions unless appropriate. The Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comments, questions. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concerns should be communicated to the superintendent of schools during regular business hours. How many do we have? Just one.
Just one.
We are here for our students and as expected, that everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules. And everyone present will model the behaviors that are expected out of the students in the school district. Thank you.
Victoria Perez Shires in regards to Board of Ed candidate. Good evening. This certainly wasn't how I intended to come out here tonight, but my name is Victoria Perez Shires, and I am humbly running for a spot on the Board of Education. But I am also human. And very quite frankly, this evening, I was out purchasing items for the McNamara Teacher Appreciation Lunch on Thursday and one hundred percent forgot about tonight. And was very kindly reminded, in which case I led with a not-so-kind word, and I tailed it over here. So wanted to start that off by saying, you know, what this community has asked for is a lot of transparency and communication. And that is who I am. So I'm gonna stand here tonight and not lie and say I forgot what time it was, but just be open and honest about who I am. And also communicate those reasons and be willing to communicate those reasons. And then lastly, to take accountability and apologize. Quite frankly, I'm very sorry. It's not a great way to start this off, potentially. So in my last two minutes, just a very little bit about me. I have lived here in Baldwinsville since 2016. I have two boys here in the district, Owen and Parker. Owen is at Ray, Parker is at McNamara. I believe strongly in this community. I've been very active, whether it's the PTA, the Little League, the Rotary Club, general volunteer efforts. And I believe in the potential this community has and also believe in working fairly and not working divisively. So fighting coming round, building bridges, working together. And so, I guess again, I'm sorry about missing earlier. But if you're looking for someone who is willing to be open, honest, do intelligent research, speak kindly and work for the success of this district, the success of our new superintendent, then I am the person you would like to see on this board. And I humbly ask for everyone's vote on the 16th. So thank you.
We have one more.
Janice Crawford in regards to Pet Partners and Wellness.
So I heard a couple of you talking about, I heard a couple of you talk about wellness. I'm involved with Pet Partners. It's a therapy program with dogs. And we can come to a wellness program. So I know it sounded like the kids are having something soon. We bring in trained dogs with their handler, and it's very successful. Recently, I was at Oswego and at St. Joseph's. And tomorrow night, I'll be in Lamon. So I just wanted to say that with this.
So I just wanted to say that with this, an opportunity for wellness, even for the staff.
Thank you. Did you leave the contact information on that sheet?
No.
Feel free to add that at some point. Thank you.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, last call. I think that's all we have. And thank you both for taking the time to attend and share your thoughts. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Do you have a motion?
Vote.
Second.
Kelly.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero. And leadership report, I will hand it over to Beth Bitch.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite up Tony Cardamone and Danielle Mahorny.
It's Justin.
Justin, thank you. Danielle will be presenting our school report card data, as well as our quarterly assessments in our status report with the state.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We do have two reports listed on the agenda tonight. We will be dedicating the majority of the focus on the state school report card data. We're very excited to share with you, as Dr. Davis did during the budget presentation tonight, our district's accountability status. For this school year, though, it is based off of last school year's state testing results. So I was going to do a big drumroll when I clicked the button on the school report card site to show this data, but I do want to highlight that if you visit the state report card and our school or district's status and support model, you will see that our school is no longer, our district is no longer considered a target district under the state's new terminology. We are considered a local support and improvement district, which is just a new term for what was formerly known as being in good standing. So the state's school report card website is updated to reflect that, and tonight's report is really just to go a little bit deeper into some of that data, but also to show a little bit about where we've been, because accountability statuses in the state have been frozen for the last couple of years because COVID disrupted the state's assessment cycle. So it's an exciting time in the world of accountability. I was actually just watching a webinar today about the proposed 23, 24, and 24, 25 two-year rebuild of the state's accountability system. What we'll be talking about tonight is a one-year restart of the state's accountability system. All of the accountability system works under the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, otherwise known as ESSA. And the purpose of ESSA is to promote educational equity by providing support to districts and schools as we work to ensure that every student succeeds. So some of you may recall this graphic from the past. We referenced it for the last three years while we've been designated as a target district with two schools who were designated to receive targeted support and improvement. So that was based on subgroup performance at Eldon Elementary and Derby Junior High. We were focusing at Eldon to support our students who are economically disadvantaged, which is defined by receiving free or reduced lunch, and our students with disabilities at Derby Junior High School. You'll also recall that good standing term, as I just mentioned, was in the old accountability system, which is now re-termed as local support and improvement. And at the time, we also had Baker High School and Polymer Elementary School who were designated as recognition schools at the time. That category has gone away, as you'll see in a couple of slides. So over the course of the last few years, we have developed a district's comprehensive improvement plan, otherwise known as a DCP. And the identified schools developed what are called ESCEPs, School Comprehensive Education Plans. So those schools have presented to the board at a few different meetings over the course of the last few years on the specifics of what they've been working on to support those subgroups. But again, we're so proud of our students, we're so proud of our staff for everything that they've done to work so hard at getting back to quote-unquote "normal." So over the last, like I said, few years, we have been focusing on updating district's level plans. You even heard tonight during the budget presentation a little sneak peek at our five-year strategic plan soon to be adopted. Within that plan, commitment to ensuring diversity, equity, and inclusion, designing and supporting multi-tiered systems of targeted support and intervention, and certainly supporting the work at Eldon and at Derby. Within each of those five priorities, we have had a continued focus on themes of social-emotional learning, restorative practices, trauma-sensitive schooling, and culturally responsive teaching. Under the state's restart, the focus is on continuous improvement. So there's been a shift really to be a more reliable, more transparent, and more explainable accountability system as a whole. And the state is using this graphic over here on the right with the thinking that once we build systems and structures, we're able to envision what is our guiding principle. We're able to analyze that ongoing data, whether it's the state assessment data or that local assessment data that we see day-to-day and that we report on here at board meetings quarterly, and that we also listen, that we have a better understanding of our student experience. We're lucky enough to have Zan as our student member here on the board, but have a greater reach beyond that as well in order to implement by organizing adults, by centering our students, and by linking teaching with learning. So under that new model to support continuous improvement, we see that the state has updated the terminology used, as mentioned. So local support and improvement is that new good standing, whereas Dr. Davis mentioned before, and as I gave that little peek on the actual state's report card itself, that we are now designated as such, as well as all of our schools, as we continue to move forward. So under this one-year restart, that is our new accountability status that again, we're very proud of. But you still see that there are schools across the state when calculations are made using cut scores and ranking of schools. Some do fall into those other categories where more support is provided. So as far as our subgroups go, as I mentioned, our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged subgroups were previously identified to receive targeted support. Now you see that they'll receive that local support and improvement under our continuous improvement model. You'll also see that those high school subgroups move from that good standing terminology to that local support and improvement terminology. We'll continue to watch our Black African-American student subgroup at the elementary middle, and actually, it includes our junior high school students as well, to ensure that they continue to make progress over time. And we'll do that as we take a look at this updated timeline. So this is another graphic that we have used since originally designated, and it just kind of maps out what our current 22, 23 plan is, as well as what our future plans are for 23, 24. Although we are now under local support and improvement, it doesn't mean that our work is done. And under the mentality of making that continuous improvement, there's always more work to do. So with our new strategic plan to help guide us, we look forward to continuing the work that we've started, where we've seen these gains start to be made, and again, continue to support our students and our staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions specific to the accountability status. I'm also happy to answer any questions related to our interactive report card, but I know that everybody's grown more and more familiar with that. So as mentioned even during Meet the Candidates, yes, our students continue to be present in school over 90% of days, which is a great thing. Our students continue to pass region-level coursework, and our students continue to participate in those extracurricular activities that we continue to monitor. So we use that report card to keep an eye on the data, to analyze that data. Between, let's say, state test and state test, we're currently in state testing, but we won't receive any new accountability statuses until about this time next year, even though our kids are currently testing. So any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Not a question. I just would like to applaud the staff, the administration, the teachers, everybody involved in moving us to LSI, or good standing. I'm still going to call it good standing. You know, for those schools that were not there. So I just wanted to applaud you for all the hard work, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask about the labels for the differentiated accountability. Has that changed just for the restart, or is that a permanent change with the different labels? And is there a reason why they made the changes?
So the reason behind the change is throughout the course of the last few years and moving toward that model of continuous improvement, the state education department really wants schools, and it wants districts, and wants communities to know that we are supported, but that they recognize that there's always more work to do. So being in good standing, trying to move away from being complacent with being good and in good standing. Again, to focus on that continuous improvement was part of the reason for that change. And really to just have that rebrand under these accountability designations so that districts feel as though they are supported.
Quick follow-up. So the restart, you said, was for one year, and then the cycle will start, the three-year cycle will start again?
We will see what the next couple of years of school accountability bring. In this year's restart, part of what the issue was, when I mentioned that reliability, transparency, and explainability, even for myself, who lives and breathes some of these systems, it has been difficult to explain how we arrive at some of these statuses or how some of these calculations are made. Moving from the system of the past to the current system of cut scores and rankings, people seem to understand the concept of cut scores and rankings a little bit more, I think. When we're considering student proficiency on state tests, for example, taking how many students scored a two, a three, and a four, dividing it by how many students tested, and then ranking that score for all the schools in the state makes more sense, explainability-wise. So that was one of the changes. The other change from the old system was student growth was factored in, but because the tests of the last couple of years have looked so different than the current tests, whether it was the time, two days compared to one day, based on COVID arrangements or exemptions or appeals altogether, that growth factor was difficult to make. And so in the webinar I was watching this afternoon, they're considering ways to bring student growth back into some of those equations as they rebuild for the next two years. So that's still going to be under a public comment period, and there might even be shifts made from what's currently being proposed to what might end up being adopted down the road.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Danielle, hi, Sean. Just a quick question. So there's the opt-out capability. Has there been a shift?
We have seen a...
In sort of decrease?
Shift way down from the past.
That's good. Do you have any explanation as to why that is, or just...
Yes and no. I would say, you know, back when we saw very high rates of opt-outs or refusals, and I'm talking like 30%, there were a lot of different factors, I think, that were more or less encouraging. You know, families to opt out, whether it was the tie to teacher performance, AP PR, at the time, whether it was just the test itself. The Common Core standards in and of itself were a very big topic. When, I'm going to say about eight years ago, we saw some of those high rates. This year, we have not seen anywhere close to those high rates. I want to have the number, but we're not done testing. So I would say that it's closer to six or seven percent, down from that 30% about, like I said, eight or nine years ago. It's not to say that it's just us. I know that there are schools across the state that are still experiencing high refusal rates, but part of ESSA's plan, or the state and federal government's expectation, is that 95% of students participate. And so there are some components of the accountability model that 95% of students, again, are expected to do so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to, excuse me, ask you to repeat the four themes that we were focusing on.
Absolutely.
Are we going to continue that to, you know, move forward?
Sure. So I'm such a visual person. My brain goes to the puzzle piece graphic. The puzzle pieces, there's four pieces, if you can picture that graphic. Social-emotional learning is one of them. Trauma-sensitive schooling is another. Culturally responsive teaching, and restorative practices. And so our buildings have really grounded themselves in much of that work. Our learning coaches support much of that work, and we're so lucky to have those coaches in that all that they do, both academically and supporting those different areas. So as our strategic plan committee continues to wrap up their work, I know that a big focus of that committee has just been to embed as much as we can both diversity, equity, and inclusion-related, as well as with some of our academic focus areas into that one plan. You're welcome.
Thank you, Danielle. You always do a great job.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks, Danielle. With that, we will move to first reading for the policies. They're listed with anybody from the policy committee, or you can...
Yep, just real quickly. We have one policy that's looking to be revised. That's 3410 Code of Conduct on school property. Some minor changes there, nothing major. And then we're looking for 3411, which is unlawful possession of a weapon on school grounds, and 3412, threats of school violence in schools. For those two policies to be required, or retired. They're not required policies, and actually, the language falls within other policies. So we're covered and/or it's covered in law. So the policy committee, based on legal guidance, is recommending the retiring of those two and the revision of 3410. Those will appear on May 22, Board of Education meeting for final approval.
Any questions? Moving on to new business. Trip request, second reading for the Girls Crew to Oak Ridge. Resolve that the Board of Education approve the Girls Crew Team to travel and participate in the Scholastic Rowing Association of America Championship Regatta May 26 to 27 of this year at Melton Lake in Oak Ridge, Tennessee pursuant to the attached. Do you have a motion?
Vote.
Second.
Kelly? Okay, any questions? Being done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero. Moving on, resolution of Health Welfare Services. Jamesville-Dewitt Central School District and the Syracuse Central School District resolve that the Board of Education approve the Health and Welfare Services Agreement and cause for Jamesville-Dewitt Central School District and Syracuse City School District pursuant to the attached. Do you have a motion? Denise? Any questions? Being done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes seven zero. Moving on. Award of Automotive Supply Bid Number 394. Resolve that the Board of Education approved the Award of Automotive Supplies Bid Number 394 pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion? Wayne? Wayne? Any questions? Being done, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Next, resolve that the Board of Education Resolve that the Board of Education approved Bid Number 394 Athletic Equipment and Supplies pursuant to the attached. Can I have a? 33, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'll second.
Wayne, Tony. Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. Next up, resolve that the Board of Education approved the Baldwinsoe Public Library Agreement for the 2023-2024 school year pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion? Is that met? Wayne? Any questions?
This is just a routine one we do every year because the library financially falls within kind of our purview, correct?
Financially, they support their own budget, and they raise their own monetary budget. However, we own the building. So yes, it's the agreement of how that whole process works. You're absolutely right.
We will vote, Conu wants to vote, we'll have to let her know we'll vote again.
I'll see.
All opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven zero. And with that, we are at Board Roundtable. Anybody have anything for Board Roundtable?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Actually, Jen Petronio, since she wasn't able to be here this evening, asked that, I read this on her behalf. And for Denise. Denise was appointed by this board to fill a board vacancy due to the resignation of Frank Mattis. Since there is another year before the expiration of Frank's term, the fourth-place finisher of the upcoming school board election will fill Frank's seat for the remaining year on his term the day after the election. So this is Denise's last board meeting. I want to thank Denise from the bottom of my heart for her willingness to take on this role and assist the board, especially in the midst of a lot of controversy. It has not been an easy year. Most people would run away, but Denise ran towards the challenges. Many people do not understand the time commitment and sacrifices made when things are running smoothly. So your courage when agreeing to take this seat during an unstable time was admirable. Your prior board experience was a huge help as we navigated these uncharted waters. Your ability to see the big picture, to connect the dots so the right questions could be asked was always critical for honest discussions. You are fearless and always strive to do the right thing for our students while keeping all other stakeholders in mind. Your expertise in the field of education and the perspective you shared was always welcomed by me. The hours you spent beyond board meetings preparing so you were fully engaged was obvious. I thank you for your dedication and service to this school district and community. And I thank your family for allowing you to work on behalf of all the students in this district. It has been a sacrifice for your family as well, and we appreciate them as much as we appreciate you. Thank you. Again, on behalf of Jen Petronio.
Wow, thank you. I appreciate that very much. So, yeah, tonight's my last meeting. I think I'll just say this has been a very good experience. I've enjoyed it very much. And I think I'll just leave saying the same thing I said back in May last year to my, to the new board members coming on on May 16th. Always ask questions. You know, continue to strive to be transparent and to communicate. I know that we've worked very hard over the past four years to do that as a board. Although I know the narratives out there sometimes don't see that, but we have, we really have tried very hard to maintain that transparency and communicate. So I appreciate those words very much. I will extend my thanks to Jen at another time. But I wish everybody here good luck. And always remember that it's about the students. So thank you for all you do and the time that you all put in.
I'm glad I got here on time, and I maintained the speed on it. So that's why I'm here. So what do you say to Denise Fosso, you know, your last day? So I will just say, thank you for making me a better board member. What most people don't know, over the last year, or even just in the last six to seven months, Denise and I have been rebuilding and repairing our relationship, having difficult conversations, candid conversations, just about our roles, just history about the process of even being elected. So I just want to say I'm grateful for those conversations. I value them, and I value you as a professional, as an educator. You've brought a lot of expertise and experience and perspective to this space, and I'm grateful for that. You pushed me to my growing edge. And I didn't really understand what you meant about digging deeper until I saw you in practice. And you shared that experience and expertise and that knowledge, and you shared it with me. So I'm grateful. And I will continue to demonstrate that as you did. And I'm just grateful for our friendship, our collegiality. And thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you do on behalf of children. So thank you.
I actually had just something short to prepare on behalf of myself before reading Jen's, what she'd asked me to prepare or to read out of. So as this is your last Board of Education meeting, I wanted to take the opportunity once again, thank you for the additional months that you dedicated to the board. You've always brought integrity, experience, understanding, professionalism, and a passion for education, both in your role in the classroom and as your role as a Board of Education member. I've continued to grow as a Board of Education member as a result of seeing the outcome of your work ethic, preparation for meetings, your ability to look at the big picture, and your willingness to always ask questions. I've always admired Denise's dedication to our district, this Board of Education, our community, and to her family. For all of these attributes, Denise, I'm grateful, and thank you.
I think all of that was well said. So thank you, Denise, for coming back and helping us out during this time. Good luck to you and family. Thank you. With that, anything else for Board Roundtable? Okay. Then we will move into executive session. Resolve that the Board of Education enter exec session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or corporation and negotiations with a particular person. Can I have a motion?
Vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.